Can I call the meeting to order? Can I get approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Welcome to today's special meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll call.
Chair Ruth Knight-Orton.
Here.
Vice Chair Fleming.
Here.
Treasurer Mohken.
Here.
Secretary Davis.
Here.
Trustee Nuberry. Trustee Hatcher. Trustee McNair.
Do I hear a motion, oh, sorry. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Oh, we did do that, didn't we?
Yeah, we have.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? A here and none? Are there remarks of the board trustees? Well, I just want to say I'm glad to be back. And the trials and tribulations I went through with a broken foot was a lot to be desired, but I'm feeling better. I'm in therapy and I have my cane for stability because I'm off balance. But other than that, I'm doing better. And I really appreciate the flowers that I got from the college and the faculty. I really appreciate that. It really helped brighten me up because I was pretty depressed, not being able to get off the couch with my foot above my heart. But any case, also too, I just want to say thank you to the board and to the faculty and staff for your wonderful outpouring of the passing of my father. It was unexpected, but I really appreciate all of your concern and outpouring of love towards me and my family during their time. It's been difficult these past few years in our family, but we're strong and we're going to keep pushing along. And sometimes you might have to tell me, maybe not me, but you'll say to yourself, "I wish he'd be quiet." Because my daughter tells me that. Any case, anyone else have anything else to talk about? All right. I'm going to turn this over to President Belanca and she's going to discuss the retreat.
Good afternoon again and hello to everyone. Thank you for being here. But to the board, tonight's retreat is, we have some very important topics to discuss. And as you know, since the implementation of our strategic plan, and I know Diana was here in 2011, but since our plan in 2011 and '12 is when we started it, student success and satisfaction was one of our priorities. And even though our strategic plan has eight priorities, the other seven are there to support our student success as well as the success of our community. So that's what we continue to be all about. In this discussion that I'm going to say next minute, I'm going to be using the word "we." And when I say "we," I want to make sure that everyone knows that what I'm referring to is to the faculty, the staff, the board, and the foundation members, people that have helped us all along and have had discussion and dialogue about student success and have put programs in place. So since 2011 and '12, we've talked about potential barriers, barriers that are there for some, but not for everyone. For example, we talked about financial issues. Financial issues, that is a barrier for some students. It's not a barrier for everyone. But we took a look at those financial, we said, "Well, you know, finance is an issue, so we should look at that. What can we do to ensure that our students have access? And what can we do, once they have access, to ensure that they have the financial support in one way or another to continue?" And as a result of that, what we put together is we, as a board and administration, looked at keeping tuition affordable. Another thing that we, all of us did, is we said, "Well, let's see what we can do about providing access with some scholarships." So we provided scholarships with the foundation board, with our own dollars. We provided scholarships for students. We, the faculty, took a look at how they were textbook costs and how can we reduce textbook costs to make them more affordable? So, so many of our faculty, you know, took the time and resources and effort to put together open education resources. And all of that was put into place to give our students a quality educational opportunity but to remove a potential barrier. We also looked at, looking at, you've heard us talk about structured pathways. And over the last couple of years, our faculty, our administration, we've been involved in creating structured pathways for our students. And a structured pathway is a way for a student, to ensure a student, that if you take these certain courses in a structured pathway, it will lead you to your goal, all in an effort to improve student success and to also help them financially get to their end goal so that they have some money left over if they want to transfer to another institution. Because as you know, the PEL is only for, what, six semesters?
Six years.
Six years. So we don't want them to use it all here if they plan on transferring. So those structured pathways are a way to make that transition to a four-year degree very, very seamless. Other things that we have done is we took a look and said, "What can we possibly do? What are we doing to promote equity in the success of all of our student populations?" And after we looked at that and where those issues were, we said, "You know what? We need an office," or actually, we need a dean, "but we need an office of student success, access, equity, and inclusion." And that's when we, and I believe all of us were part of that, sat down and said, "What do we need?" And I remember sitting at a drawing board and people were saying, "Well, we need this to our students, we need this for our students." And based, hi Ruth, and based on that, we created a job description and we hired a dean that actually took that and has made that come into focusing on student success, equity, and inclusion and access a reality. Well, how did that become a reality? Well, one of the things you heard us talk about last year in November is we talked about, we introduced you to FIDIACs, students their first time at college. And we talked about the rate, the success rate of our FIDIACs at our students and what, we looked at them as a cohort and we were looking at, how can we strategize to help these FIDIAC students get through? Because some of them, students who are first time at college, they don't have, they're first time in their family, they, not all, but some have barriers to success. So we wanted to see, how could we help them? Another thing you may recall, when we had a discussion here, when we were talking about student success, and I remember that Carl Covert was speaking and we were so impressed with his success scores. And I believe, actually, I think it was you, Ruth, I'm not sure, but someone said, "We, this is great, we should do this." And, you know, we can't do that with 12,000-plus students, but we could do it if we divided students into cohorts. And so that's exactly what this office started doing. We started taking our students, we now have something like STEM Scholars, we started breaking our students into cohorts, realizing it's pretty small sections of students, but realizing that whatever we could do with these students, we would learn, we could upscale it and make it bigger and figure out what to do as we progressed. All of this was a way to remove barriers that might exist for some students. So the other thing that we did is we talked about hiring. We said, "Okay, we want to make sure that we have diversity. We want a diverse faculty, we want diverse staff, we want diversity so that when our students come here, they see people like them, they're represented." All of that was to remove a barrier that might be there for some. That's why we did it. We also looked at our assessment. Our faculty's done tremendous work in assessment and, as you know, we were part of the HLC, Higher Learning Commission Academy on Assessment. We're doing, we're making great strides, all of that, just to make sure that our students were being, were able to assess their outcomes. Well, there's, there are a few other areas that are barriers for some students, not for all. And I want to make sure that when we start this discussion, that we are all on the same page on this. When we talk, tonight, we're going to talk about developmental education. Developmental education is a very good thing. There isn't anything wrong with developmental education. But for some students, it might be a barrier. And so tonight, what we'd like to do is have a conversation with you. And many of you are probably very aware of this because I know that you receive the college trustee quarterly. I also know that many of you have attended the ACCT and you've also attended conference with the MCCA. And all of these conferences have had discussions about developmental education. So you know, there's been quite a bit of research around developmental education and things that people are learning across the country. Again, I just want to make sure we all go into this conversation with the understanding, just like finances isn't a problem for everyone, but we still keep tuition low. The same thing with developmental. Developmental education is the right thing for some students. But let's take a look at how, at what we're learning based on the data that we see from developmental. This conversation tonight with you and Vice President Hearns will bring you up to date on how the faculty have had some dialogue. But again, we want more dialogue with faculty on this. But we want to make sure that the board is surprised of the conversations that are occurring. And if you have any questions about what we're sharing, we'd like to hear that, too. The other thing we're going to talk about tonight, after we talk about developmental education again, is another barrier. It itself isn't a barrier, but for some students that are, you know, have a, have an addiction of some sort, it's a real difficult challenge for some students. So we're going to just talk about what we're doing about a collegiate recovery program. So tonight, we're going to talk about two things, two topics, developmental education and the collegiate recovery program, and how that all works towards helping our students have success, access, and goal completion within a timeframe that's affordable and is successful for them. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hearns.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As the heading of our presentation today says, our goal today is to talk about expanding access. And as Dr. Belanca mentioned, this conversation started with the work around student success. So a year ago, we had a presentation, we talked about the work that we were doing around student success. And one of the things that we were able to do is, with that smaller cohort of students, is to really look at each student's trajectory and figure out, you know, what happens to those students from semester to semester? What courses are they taking? You know, what courses are they successfully completing? And as we did that, we started to see for some of our students that developmental education had become a barrier which they got stuck into. And so we started to dig into that some more. And in preparation for our retreat and for our in-service last week, as we started to look at more and more research, one of the things you'll hear us talk about, kind of at the end part of this presentation, is placement. You know, and so our goal was not to look at just kind of what shows as a symptom of the problem, but really to get to the root of the problem. So we'll talk about a lot of different pieces of research and that research is also, was included in the packets that you are received, but you'll kind of see us kind of tell a story from us looking at student success and kind of digging to the root of some of those problems. And so when we started talking about, I mentioned that our, we had an in-service session last week and one of the things that we wanted to do was, in the fall, have a conversation, we mentioned to the faculty, we want to have a conversation around developmental education. And that really morphed into last week, us having a very rich conversation with the faculty that just really centered on placement. We had Peter Barr coming in from the University of Michigan. He's one of the top qualitative researchers in community college across the country and he did a very thorough presentation for us. And I think not only the administrators and the staff who were in that session, but also the faculty, we all learned a lot. I mean, we ended up spending more of the time just focusing on what we learned and what we think we should be doing around placement, more so than anything else. So we'll talk about a lot of different things today in our agenda. We'll talk about the history of developmental education. We'll also move into the voluntary framework, so we'll look at some data as it relates to Wash'naw Community College and what our data looks like from a developmental education standpoint, as well as equity. Then we'll dig into placement research and some of the challenges that are around placement. We'll look at some national policy trends and then discuss what our next steps are as a college.
Your packet, there's copies of those slides in your, in the green folder.
In the green folder. We need to put it in the pockets, I apologize. You got it. We're walking through this.
Yes.
You want to walk through that and keep pushing your neck. And then also in your packet, we're going to look for a nice infographic that says the evolution of developmental education. And let's flip that over on the back. So before we start throwing around a lot of lingo in regards to developmental education, we thought it was important to talk about some definitions. So on the back of that infographic, you'll see a glossary for this presentation. So some of you all may be familiar with some of these words, some not so much. So just a quick kind of primer here. Accuplacer. Accuplacer is the current placement tool we use at the college. It replaced Compass, which we used before, and you'll hear us mention that later on in the presentation. Alex, PPL, which is Placement Preparation and Learning, is what we use for math placement. Some of you all might remember Lisa Romies and some faculty and Dean Good talked about our use of Alex and how we're using that on campus. And we're using that to replace the placement tool we had previously. We'll use the term college level, so when we talk about college level, any academic course that is an actual college-level course, meaning that the student is earning college credit for that course. Developmental education, so when we talk about developmental education courses, those courses are to help students remediate and get prepared for college-level courses, but they are not college-level courses. So students are not earning credits toward the goals or their degree or certificate. Multiple measures placement, placement is determined by more than a single high-stakes placement exam. So we start talking about multiple measures, we're looking at a more comprehensive view of the students as we place them into the different courses that they need to take. And then another term that we'll be using is corequisite model. So a corequisite model, different schools have implemented these in different ways, but it allows students to take college-level courses, maybe have some support services along with them, or maybe add remedial courses as well.
Can I have a question?
Sure, Kim.
So are the college-level courses still 100 and above, or is that sort of squishy?
It's only squishy in that the reading courses do have a 1 in front of them. So our, most of, well, all of our math and English developmental courses start with a zero, but the reading 1 start with a 1. Those two reading courses, we'll introduce you to, and those two start with a 1.
Excuse me, Kim. My other question is on your developmental education. It says, "If the student is not college-level in those areas, how does financial aid affect that?"
Financial aid can pay for up to 30 credits of developmental credits. So they can pay for developmental classes.
But it goes towards the rest of the course, courses that they'll be taking also, correct?
Right. So it still counts like, so as Dr. Belanca mentioned, PEL has a six-year lifetime limit. So if you're using a year of your PEL for developmental, you lose that year. So six years, no matter what. So you have six years to finish your bachelor's degree is what the federal government provides, is six years of funding, six years of full-time funding for, to get your bachelor's degree. And they have a max of 30 credits, 30 credits of PEL can be used for developmental courses.
So just for an example, like if some students, or a student, I'll just use that, is not able to finish, bring up their level in the remediation in that year, are they able to do it again and it still will go against their PEL?
So PEL has, we keep, we have to keep track of that. So PEL can only be at 30 credits. So once they've used 30 credits of PEL for developmental, PEL can no longer pay for developmental. But we do have some students that use those 30 credits. If they're making progress, then we have to, we scholarship them with some other funding so that they can continue on and get to college level because PEL can no longer be used.
Got you. Okay. That's interesting.
So now, if you flip on the other side of that handout, you'll see, we'll be back to the infographic. And again, this was just, I thought, a great picture of the kind of the history of developmental education. And as you note on that infographic, that, you know, the GI Bill created a wide-open access for students and that's when we started to see developmental education kind of come into play. And the goal was to bridge the gap of preparedness for students. So that was, that was the intention, was to prepare students. And then that remedial, those remedial services were established to address disparities in academic preparation, specifically among increasingly diverse populations. So one of the things to take notice, we move through the presentation, is that, you know, those are the intentions, and I think the big word there in regards to those diverse populations, you know, and thinking about, is that really is the intention in what's being served as it relates to developmental education today.
Please, on a national basis. National history, not Washington.
This is national history, absolutely, absolutely. And that's a good question because we're going to be moving back and forth, you know, from some of the research that we presented and back and forth through Wash'naw as well as national data. So some of the realities currently of developmental education, and these are national figures, and I think it's important to note that, you know, this is not just a community college problem. So, you know, one-third of first-year undergraduates overall are taking at least one developmental course, and that's 40% at the community colleges. It is a major investment, and again, from a student's standpoint, from a college standpoint, from resources. And then in a lot of instances, those success numbers in those courses are just really low. Students who take developmental courses, both through financial aid, as Linda just recently discussed, and then there has just been a growing examination of the efficacy of developmental education overall. And then one of the things that I mentioned that we will highlight is that the placement tests have been identified as one of those key challenges. When you think about a single high-stakes test being the measure of how students are placed, a lot of those students are being under and overplaced. And overall, students in developmental education are just less likely to complete a program or earn a degree. So one of the terms that I did not include on the glossary that is a growing term in a lot of the research in regards to student success is momentum. So a lot of students gain momentum early on in their college year. So if you think about, you know, your experiences in college, you know, everybody says that first semester, get the best grades you can get, you know, really, you know, get the best GPA so you can kind of, you know, have a successful overall experience. And so, not everybody did that, but that's what a lot of times they recommend for us. And so for a lot of our students, they're not gaining that momentum. They're not seeing themselves reach their goals or move towards those goals because a lot of times they're taking those developmental courses. And I think it's important to say, from a momentum standpoint and a student success standpoint, it is necessary for a lot of our students to take developmental courses. So, you know, just as we dig into the data, this is not to say that developmental is not something that's extremely important for that preparedness for a lot of our students. It's just for us to dig into some of the things from a student success standpoint that has become a barrier for some of our students.
One of the most important things that I'm looking at, this chart here that we look at, is this examination of the efficacy of developmental education. So there is increasing research on how it's working. Is there also research on how to make it work better?
Absolutely.
And is that part of the momentum thing? Is that's coming out of research that shows that establishing good momentum makes it more successful or?
Correct. So students, so one of the things that you'll see is that a lot of students, again, they're not, you know, they're not getting into those college courses. And I'm going to give the example, if I was a culinary student here, I may not be able to take that first semester culinary course. So that might be very demotivating for me, so I'm not gaining that momentum. So what's happened is those students are, you know, not as motivated, not as successful, and a lot of times they'll stop now. So there's a lot of research that says that those corequisite models and different support services that help those students get to where they need to while they are achieving those goals are a lot more successful. But again, we're not prescribing any one solution because we have a diverse population of students and there's a lot of different things we need to look at. And one of them, we will talk more about from a research standpoint, is placement.
Now, it strikes me from previous meetings that we're already implementing things, policies to address this, like allowing people to do developmental coursework along with coursework that might, it seems like that was at a meeting previously that we were allowing that to happen, or that we're really looking at the Alex or these placement things more aggressively to properly place people and that we have here at WCC as sort of programs to really start addressing some of these things. Is that true?
Absolutely.
Are we looking at those things today?
Absolutely. And not only today, we look at national research, we're going to look at research of the things that we've implemented so far and how those are working and then what else we need to be thinking about and doing going forward. So actually, Alex is one of the things that we'll be talking about. Dean Good will talk more about Alex and how that's working and some other strategies that are working that we've implemented so far. So we're, of course, we're, I mean, this is a part of a process of us constantly looking at what should we be doing more of, what should we be doing better in a more focused way? So we're always in that continuous improvement mode. And again, some of this is national research, some of this is our own research.
Thank you.
So when we talk about developmental education can be a barrier towards completion, one of the things that I think is a good example for us, and one of the things that we really learned as we dug into, really focusing on individual students and what their trajectory of college was, in this example here is one of our certificate programs. And our certificate programs are created to help students who want to gain skills and go directly into the workplace, right? And I think one of the things to kind of preface this with is, again, this is not us presenting one of our associate degree programs. This is one of our certificate programs that has 24 credits. And in the fall of last year, we hired a CTE Navigator, Career and Technical Education Navigator. And his goal was to look at our CTE students and help them along the way to figure out, you know, what courses they need, what assistance and support services they may need. And one of the things that came up in the CTE Navigator is a lot of those students were just not getting out of developmental education. So for example, a student who would have selected the welding and fabrication certificate, that student could not take any of those courses that are in that program because they had to take developmental courses because we currently have a one-size-fits-all in regards to what the prerequisites are for all of our courses.
So who decides what level of reading or writing or math that welding student needs to be in that program?
The faculty decide that based on the courses that they design. So when they go to-
The welding courses.
The welding courses, correct. The welding faculty would have designed those courses, taken those courses to the curriculum committee, and the curriculum committee would have approved those. Currently, we have more of a one-size-fits-all in that our courses all have, especially from a reading and a writing standpoint, a level that's across the board.
So that's level six?
Level six.
So a welding student has to have college-level writing in order to take welding?
Currently, yes.
And the welding department wants that to be the case?
Currently, that's what the policy is.
The policy is.
That's, I mean, it's not even a policy. The curriculum committee is a faculty committee. And so that committee, this is what was approved for those courses.
No, see, I frankly believe everybody should learn how to write an essay. But I'm not sure, you know, welders would agree with me. I'm just wondering where the determination of the level comes from.
The curriculum committee. If the faculty, I mean, if- If the faculty, I mean, the faculty is the one who presented that to the curriculum committee, and the curriculum committee is going to make recommendations to the, you know, vice president of instruction accordingly.
So, so right now, there's nothing that allows a student that's interested in welding that needs developmental work to take that developmental work concurrently with their initial welding courses?
No.
So they couldn't take one or two developmental courses along with one or two welding courses?
No, but there are some students who will go see an advisor, and there may be an approval for them to do it in a prerequisite manner. But that is not what the default is.
Wouldn't it make more sense to do a content analysis of the reading material in the course to determine whether or not a certain level of reading proficiency was necessary for that course? I mean, I can see, I mean, we put a one in front of all of the welding, welding course numbers, which implies that they're all college-level courses, except for that squishiness that you mentioned about English courses where we have one in front of developmental courses. So there's already squishiness, let's acknowledge that. So why wouldn't we, for example, have the faculty do a content analysis of the reading and math skills required for the particular course? I understand this might be hard to do, but wouldn't it make more sense to do that rather than to? I mean, it could be some, some young person is turned on by introduction to whatever it is, welding, and that gets them hooked on the career, and then suddenly they're motivated, oh, for this next level course, I'm going to have to take, you know, English, one, whatever it is. And so then they're motivated. So doesn't that make sense?
Absolutely. And I think one of the things that's important as we, you know, look at this slide is that, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into us being concerned about student success. I mean, I think everybody comes to the table with the intention to be concerned about students. But what this highlights is that there are a lot of things that, in this past year, as we, you know, looked at individual students one at a time and started to follow them, unfortunately, our good intentions, sometimes our intentions, that create barriers for students. Not for all students, but for some students. And that actually is the punchline of how we ended up here and figuring out, these are some things that we need to look at. So Trustee Landau, what you mentioned is exactly one of the things that we need to look at. We need to evaluate our courses. Not to say that a course in which you're getting associate's degree, we would never confer an associate's degree and say, oh, you're not at college level or you can't write a great essay. But when we start looking at some of our certificates that we've built after we had created those associate degrees, we do need to evaluate those things because the student's goal in this example was to come to college to go get a job. And if we're not serving that goal, we're out of the mission of the college. And so exactly what you're saying is exactly one of the things that we need to do. And it just highlights those small things that we're starting to see in a more amplified way that seemed so obvious, but it was well-intentioned in the beginning.
I'd just like to say that I think that making, for, I know English better than reading. I know the reading department does assessment of all the textbooks of what the reading level should be. And they already do that. But for the writing component, I was trying to say that most welders, whatever level, will not be writing essays for publication. And there are one-hundred level classes for business writing. And I don't understand, and I never did, because I used to talk to the welders about it, why on earth they would require, so I think some of the faculty, without understanding what the course is, are making arbitrary judgments about what their students need that's creating the barrier.
I agree. And so one of the things that we did last week when we had our in-service session is I, you know, we were very intentional in making Dean Tucker make sure that there were occupational faculty when we began this conversation. Because I think a lot of times, it's not that, if they were, if this was a lot clearer to them, that they would really know what that experience is like for some of those students. So I think exactly what you're saying, Trustee Hatchett, is important, is that everybody is at the table from a faculty standpoint to represent the students in these courses in a more holistic way instead of this one-size-fits-all.
There's a prejudice against occupational and business writing, that it's easier, that it's not college-level. And I think a lot of the occupational faculty think that. But I don't know why we have to torture welders in essay-writing classes. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay.
Speaking is a form of torture, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm a former torturer, yeah.
I just wanted to say, this is great dialogue on this piece of what's going on here because, as we know, a lot of the students today are coming out of the high schools without these skilled levels. And, and then they're going into an occupation thinking, this is all I want to do, but I have to jump through these hurdles. And so you're talking about momentum. That momentum is already squashed at the beginning before they even start because of these, that we're putting on to the students.
And I think one great example on the third, the third bullet on this slide, Stroh Processing. You've heard us talk about this program. I'm sorry, Trustee DeBarge.
I, I just wanted to follow up on what a couple of people have been saying. It strikes me that allowing people to, I'd like to encourage people to take developmental classes, even if it may not be necessary for this particular class. But it strikes me that somebody that really wants to do a welding program, and that's what they want, we can incentivize them to take that developmental class by letting them do it concurrently. You can take this welding class if you take this developmental class, and then rather than having to leap an obstacle, we're creating, we're letting them do something they want to do in order to get them to take a developmental class that's going to help them in many ways throughout their life. So, it just seems like concurrent, being able to take those developmental courses concurrently with these other classes in these occupational programs might be a way to go to incentivize people to succeed in those things.
As we talk about, you know, assessing the reading level of these perhaps textbooks, and I notice, and they're probably in a lot of the courses, safety and OSHA regulations, someone's going to have to be able to read that. But what, we don't know from this what the writing requirement is for those classes. How much do these students have to write?
Absolutely.
And what kind of writing is it?
Is it technical or just plain writing?
And I will say that, some of these, as we moved last year with our general education requirements, a lot of these courses did move to our technical writing courses as one of the requirements. So that did, I think, that we should see that has helped out some for some of those students, especially those who are proceeding on to an associate's degree. So, again, there's some work there, but again, there's a lot more work that we can do in this area. But as I was saying with our Stroh Processing program, and just highlighting a program, you know, the only one we currently have where we've had a positive outcome of students who, there's a certificate program with the high-wage, high-demand job. The students came into the program and they completed. And the thing that's really nice about that program, and I think you've heard us mention before, is this past spring, we had students graduate from the certificate program and graduate from the GED program at the same time and go directly to work, you know? And, and that really speaks to that goal attainment and the mission of why we're here.
Since you mentioned GED, it seems to me that one of the issues that we're forced to deal with is the high school deficiency. And it seems to me that politically, statewide, nationwide, if a student comes to a community college or college without the skills they need, for instance, they can't read, they can't do arithmetic, that the, the state funding should pay for that remediation because they already paid for it once in high school and it didn't work.
And I think one strategy that is important that we did not highlight in this PowerPoint is that the math department has been doing, working with VP Blakey, going to the high schools, doing a lot more bridging the gap as it relates to our math preparation. So there has been a lot of work in that area.
That's a really good discussion. I'm quite sure we're going to come back to this again.
All right. So in your packet, there's, you have a beige sheet that has our academic levels and course placement. Just to give you a sense of, we use a variety of tests. You can see that we, and we refer to levels just to make it easier for students so that, so they don't have to remember Accuplacer score or an SAT score or whatever. So whatever score they're using, and we'll use Accuplacer, SAT, or ACT to determine their academic level in reading, writing, and math. And you can see we use Accuplacer for reading and writing, and we use Alex, as noted before, for math. The blue arrow notes what's considered college level. So we'll talk about, you'll hear six and six, reading and writing, because level six in reading is considered college level. Level six in writing is considered college level. For math, once you're at level three, those are college-level courses that count towards graduation. The scores that have been determined are set by, are set by the faculty. When Compass kind of went out of business, and we'll talk about that more later, Accuplacer came in and we had to kind of set scores. There is no national set score. It's kind of set by institution. In some states that have state systems, the state has set the score level. In Michigan, that doesn't have a state system, each institution sets what their score levels are. And there's a lot of variety. So you can see for reading, we have an Accuplacer of eighty that denotes college level. That score ranges across the state from sixty-five to eighty-five. So some colleges have said, at sixty-five, we're going to deem you to be college-level. Some schools are requiring eighty-five to be college-level. So just to give you a sense, there's a lot of variety there. So the, if students are below level six in reading and writing, then they would be taking developmental courses, as noted before. And as this slide notes, we have nine-hundred-and-forty-two credit courses at the college office. That does not include our summer UA programs. We have nine-hundred-and-forty-two credit courses. Ninety-two percent require level six and six in reading and writing. So eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight, ninety-two percent require level six on reading and writing to take the course. We have thirty-five courses, or four percent have what we call reduced level. So they might require a level three, a level four. And you can see the levels, the courses that we're talking about, we're talking about reading, the developmental reading courses, writing, our ESL courses, the math developmental courses. And again, developmental courses are the courses that students take to get up to college level. Then we have an additional thirty-nine courses, or four percent, that we, that are listed as no basic skills. So those are courses that are generally studio courses, painting, ceramics, dance courses. We have our CPR course, guitar. So those courses have been deemed by the faculty to say they don't need reading and writing level at, at college level, and students can access those courses. We do prerequisite checking and banner. And so we basically, the student, they come in and take these exams. And so I want you to now go into your folder and pick, the sheet that says, turn over when instructed, and turn it over. And so, when a student comes in, they can provide us SAT scores because the state now requires SAT as the, kind of the state exam. They may have taken ACT. But if they're taking Accuplacer, they take the Accuplacer and they'll get this score sheet. And all of you have a different score sheet. So it'll show you basically what your reading and writing scores were. And at the bottom, it tells you what your levels are. Your reading level three, or writing level two, or if you're six and six, and then exactly kind of what course that level is going to allow you to take. So that's the sheet that individual students get. We do prerequisite checking and banner. So we actually, at the time of registration, we actually check what the students' levels are compared to what the course requires. There's many institutions that use course recommendations, course levels, as a recommended placement, a recommend, they recommend the student, but they don't check it during registration. Because we do prerequisite checking, we have thousands, literally, we have over eight thousand. We have students submit prerequisite overrides. So they're trying to register for the class, it says you don't meet the prereq, and they say, well, yes, I do think I meet the prereq because of this and this. So that, and it's like a hundred-and-sixty-two prereq overrides a week that are evaluated by counselors, advisors, and faculty.
Do the students still have the Writing Center option?
Yes.
For the writing test?
Yes, they can do a writing sample, yes.
And that overrides the test?
Yes, it does. They can't do that initially, but they take the Accuplacer or the ACT first, and then they can, then they can come in and do a writing sample.
Right.
The writing sample, basically, they are given a subject to write on, and they have to write three paragraphs, and it's evaluated by English faculty and determine what placement, what the level is.
And have we ever studied the sort of follow-on of those students who did the Writing Center placement and how they succeeded or not, or what courses they were placed into, to see whether it's working or not?
We have not studied that specifically. I mean, we do have students that place into level six, they'll place low on a test, and then they'll place into six, or into ninety versus fifty. But we haven't studied that, that measurement specifically by itself.
Yeah. Be interesting to know whether it's a waste of time or whether it's helping.
We do know students that do, that do poorly on that test will do well on the writing sample.
People who do well in the reading and not on the writing often do well on the writing system. Because the writing tests are rather bizarre. Just saying.
I see you were in the, the English department.
I graded a lot of those papers, yeah. Yes, I placed a lot of those students.
One of the primary tools that we use in looking at our own students' developmental path is the voluntary framework of accountability. You've heard us reference this tool before. I'd like to give you a little bit of background of the tool first. It's one of many reports that's run through our IR department. It is a national tool. It's also used statewide. In fact, the graduation completion rate is the same as reported to the state of Michigan for performance funding. The BFA is actually the first national system of accountability that was created by and for community colleges. It was launched in 2013, funded by the Lumina and Bates Foundations, and it was created in partnership with the American Association of Community Colleges. Approximately sixty community colleges worked over eighteen months to develop it. It is now member-funded, and there are over two hundred community colleges who are members. Most of the Michigan community colleges are part of it. So it was founded as an alternative to other national data sets that we also use, such as iPads, that are really geared more towards traditional students, traditional four-year, full-time, first-time-in-college students. And what makes the voluntary framework really unique is that it looks at community college students and their lifecycle. So we, for developmental, what we'll show you is six-year data on a cohort that entered in the fall of 2011. We also have two-year cohort data for students that entered in 2015 in the voluntary framework. But the six-year cohort really looks at community college students, the way they would go through a typical pathway. The voluntary framework also looks at subsets of students, including first-time-in-college students, credential-seeking students, and a main cohort, which is what we'll be looking at tonight. Other kind of unique aspects of this data set that we can use are looking at adult basic education students and career and technical students. So overall, the voluntary framework is just a really useful tool for us. As far as developmental ed data that we'll be looking at, it really details student progress through our developmental ed curriculum and how students do through the whole lifecycle. And kind of shows leakage points across the academic pathway. And a quote from the BFA designer stated, "The framework helps identify obstacles that prevent students from earning meaningful credentials and guide decision- and guide decisions to improve student success." And what you'll see is that many students are taking multiple developmental courses. And sometimes they don't complete them and aren't able to proceed to college credit, and then therefore don't make it to their goal. So if you look at the data, you'll see how that's presented.
Excuse me. So the ones, I hope I'm not sounding redundant here, but the ones who do not complete, do the counselors talk to them to see where they're, what's going on with them? And the instructor to figure out what's happening, why they're not completing? Is it because outside, home, or whatever? Or is it, is it just their capability to do it?
Students who, any, you know, once a student does not pass a developmental course, or they have a GPA below two point oh, they are automatically in our academic intervention program, or they meet with an advisor.
Okay.
And they talk about kind of strategies, about, you know, are you maybe working too many hours? Or, you know, whatever strategies they come up with to try to say, okay, how can we get you on a successful track? So that academic intervention, you know, they meet with an advisor and they kind of figure out a plan moving forward.
Okay.
How to get back on the right track.
Okay. And has that been successful?
Sometimes.
Sometimes?
Yep, sometimes.
We don't.
And I, and I think I could say that, you know, this last year, we've had coaches in some of those courses, specifically in the reading courses. And what we found is the students who did take advantage of the coaches and the services they offered were successful at a higher rate than the students who did not. And so I, you know, it's a matter of, you know, like you said, it's not that they can't do it. There's a lot of other things. Our students have a lot of other life going on than a traditional four-year student might. And so we do find, if we can get the students to the services, they are a lot more successful in getting through those courses. Because there's a lot of other things that are going on.
Exactly, exactly. Yes, Rue?
Do we know the success of the advisor program? Do we know after an advisor has met with someone who's failing, or not showing up, or whatever, do we have a way of knowing whether that intervention was successful?
So, so the students who are in academic intervention, certainly not all of them are successful.
Of course not. But I'm just wondering if we have any data on if it's, how many are working, how many, if it's working or not?
So just the fact that they meet with an advisor has not, is not just an indication of, of success.
No.
I think the academic intervention of, of basically meeting with them and coming up with a plan, because sometimes a student just kind of goes back and does exactly what they wanted to do. So we also limit the credits that they can take, because some students say, I want to be full-time again. And we'll limit, like, okay, let's cut back on some of the credits that you take. Sometimes that's kind of a fight with the student, because they want to continue to be full-time. But I think, you know, the, just the, the students are generally kind of receptive and helpful in saying, yes, it was helpful to meet with the advisor and come up with a plan.
Well, I understand that, and I think all students would say that. My question is a little more hard-boiled, which is, if the advisor has a, I saw these fifteen students, and we've made a plan, and I even saw more than once, maybe. Who knows how many times I saw them? Where are they next year?
Right.
And we know that.
Right. And some of the issue is that the plan that the stu, that the kind of the, the advisor came up with is not necessarily what the student registered for.
I know that.
Right.
I know why it wouldn't work. I'm just saying, if, if ninety percent of the students are finding something else to do, then we need to find something else to do. If more of the students are following the plan and are appreciating the intervention, then we need to do more of it. I don't know the answer to that question.
And I think we don't have those hard-boiled numbers from an advising standpoint. But I think a promising, small-scale project so far has been, as we can get those students to the services that we have tons of, those students are more successful. So in these small groups of students who are receiving coaching, it's a lot easier currently for us to track them. We are seeing those students persist at a greater success than the students who don't partake in those services. So I think, you know, again, there's something there that needs to be dug into.
Because actually, because the coaching is during the semester. So it's kind of intervening during the semester, as opposed to academic intervention. You've already failed the course, and now you're seeing an advisor.
But we have, we have some data about results of the.
Coaching, yeah.
Absolutely. So one of the, if I may, Ms. Chair. Those are, that's an excellent, seriously, question, which is why we're using this cohort model. Because, and that's when we start talking about scaling it up. Because we can probably answer, I know, we can answer that question based on the cohorts that you direct to see advisors. You know what's happened to that cohort, you know the ones that are in developmental. You know, you know everything there is to know about your students. And then, and your students, the, the coaches know everything there is to know about their students. Should we scale that up to maybe include it to advisors? You know, probably. But that's what we're doing this year, is on a smaller scale, studying exactly what you're asking us to do. So, but, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out as we, but that, just so you know, that is, is that, I mean, please, I don't want to speak for you. You guys are the ones doing the work.
What we've found is students are going to the resources early enough to get the academic support that they need, the support, emergency funds that they need. Because typically what we're seeing, they're withdrawing because of non-academic issues. So where the coaches are able to, hey, you're, you know, they're checking with them weekly. They're able to get to those students before they decide on their own, and I'm just going to walk away from, from college.
And the coaches begin at the beginning of the semester?
Yes, they meet the coaches at the beginning, enduring the semester.
Yes, David?
How many coaches, who's doing the coaching? How many are there? And how many students are participating with this coaching program?
It's a small cohort model.
I know it is, but I'm just not, wondering how many.
I'm wondering, if I may ask, Ms. Chair, if this is, and that's a very good question too. Could we start making a list of all these really good questions? Seriously, I say this respectfully, like the coaching, like your, the questions you had about the advisors. Any other, really, all of these questions. Vanessa, if you want to sit up here. I want, I want to make sure I get every single question, because we do want to respond to them. I just want to make sure that we continue our convers, respectfully answer any of your questions, but still continue on the conversation about student placement. And yet, I don't want to lose any, I don't want to lose sight of anything you're asking either. Does that sound fair to you? Does that sound fair to you? Okay, thank you.
So I just want to make sure, Vanessa, you're getting all this.
And I will too. So we're on the developmental. So let's go back to, if you don't mind. No, go ahead. Because these are great questions. But we do need, need to move on. Yes, go ahead, June.
So as, before we look at the data, we wanted to give a snapshot of the exercises we're talking about. So these are the developmental sequences at WCC. And we have the sections that are, were offered at fall, fall of eighteen, and sections that are up for winter of nineteen. And keep in mind, it's twenty-two students in each class, so it could be a rough idea of numbers. So for reading the sections, there are those squishy one-hundred numbers, ACS one-oh-seven and one-oh-eight. Those are the, the reading sequences. And incidentally, these are all four credit courses. So the financial aid question, I mean, these are four credit courses, four credits, four credit, but not applicable to a degree program. And then the writing sequences, English oh-five-oh, oh-five-one, oh-nine-oh, and oh-nine-one. And with those oh-five-oh, students can transition into oh-five-one with a satisfactory grade. It's not graded on a grading scale, it's graded satisfactory. Same with oh-nine-oh and oh-nine-one. And upon completion of that, students are ready for college-level reading. The math sequence, they can take math oh-six-seven, and then math oh-nine-four or math oh-nine-seven. And upon completion of those, they are ready for a college-level math course.
Yes, David?
Are all of these in classroom, or some of them distance learning?
Some are online.
The only distance learning one is one-oh-eight, the ACS one-oh-eight. But there are on-ground ones that students can take if they don't want to take a distance learning.
So we're going to go do a bar graph for our English, Reading and Math. And this is from the BFA. And the important thing to, when we're looking at this, is to mind the gap. So looking at the, the spaces actually between the bars, which is where the story really is. And again, this is a six-year cohort, so all new students entering in fall 2011 over six years, which is, as you can see up in the top right corner, three thousand and fifty-five students. So seven hundred and thirty-three of those students, or twenty-four percent, this is English, entered in 2011 and placed into developmental English, which means they took a test and were placed into a developmental English class. So that would have been a full group. Of those, of that twenty-four percent, of that seven hundred and thirty-three, eighty-nine percent attempted developmental English. So eighty-nine percent of the twenty-four percent attempted developmental English. So most of them, a ton of them. Of that six hundred and fifty-two, three hundred and fifty-eight got to college level. So of that eighty-nine percent, of that six fifty-two, fifty-five percent became college level. And of that fifty-five percent, that three fifty-eight that became college level in English, that got through that English sequence, a hundred and thirty-six, or thirty-eight percent, passed college English. So the final number, which isn't up there, is of those who placed, eighteen percent ended up making it all the way through the sequence. And now, you don't know where along the path students fell out, but that's about six hundred students lost from beginning to end.
Yes, Rue?
Are any of these, any of these students, English as a second language students?
No.
All native English speakers?
No, they would have been, yeah, because they would be taking ASL classes.
But the English as a second language classes are listed as developmental.
You say that again?
The English as a second language classes are listed as developmental.
They would not be included in this data set, though. I don't believe, I'll double check.
Yeah, because they, I mean, I was surprised by that, because some of those ESL classes are harder for most of the people in this room. But if they're developmental, that might have something to do with it. The other thing is, what's the, what's the non-developmental student's success rate for college English?
Yeah, that would be interesting.
The non-developmental student's success rate for college English.
When you just look at success rates of courses, overall, it's about the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
So they're not doing any worse than the general population. They might be in the wrong class.
Could you repeat, I want to make sure I have that question.
If I'm an entering student and I'm not placed in developmental.
What's your, how many?
Random non-developmental student, what's the success rate in college English?
Okay, got it.
Question, with regard to, I just have this sort of sneaky suspicion about this. Is it possible that the students that actually complete and pass college English are the ones that have the highest level reading scores to start within the developmental program?
Could be, could be.
I mean, I just, the other question I have, and I don't want to dwell too far. How low do we go? I mean, I do a lot of K-12 work. I mean, what, what reading levels do we encounter in this basic reading and basic writing? I mean, are we talking about elementary-level reading? Are we talking, how, how far low do we go?
So students have to, so if you refer to the sheet, the, so students who are below level three, so levels one or two in reading
Right.
would be considered below eighth-grade level.
Okay.
And we don't have any classes that are below eighth-grade level, so that's.
So if a student comes in below?
Eighth grade.
Right.
Eighth grade.
Then we don't have any.
We would refer them to Washington Literacy.
Got it.
And they can get their skills up, and then, they have to be at least at level three to access any of our courses.
Does that happen a lot?
A lot? I mean, we get, I wouldn't say a lot, but we have, we get, last, you know, not a lot. We get students that refer to Washington Literacy every semester.
Okay.
And I would add that, in my experience, the reading score is much more important than the writing score.
Yes, David?
So of the eleven percent that are placed for developmental English but don't even attempt it, so that eighty-something students in this group, what happens to them? Do they just go away?
Or find a course they can take?
Well, these would be folks who took Accuplacer, right? So they may look at that, have sticker shock, and say, hell no, I'm not doing this, right?
Probably.
They just walk through the door and.
Right, this BFA data is showing, is students who are enrolled. So these are, this is a cohort, because BFA looks at a six-year cohort. So these are students who started in 2011 and looked at what they did over a six-year period.
So these are students that came through the door. First thing we do is we give them Accuplacer. And then some of those folks look at their scores and say, you know, I'm not going to do this.
Right, or they, right, or they take some, right, they may have taken.
Or they take.
They might have taken a reading class, but they didn't take the writing, this, this service class.
Yep.
And many might have, you know, they may have placed in multiple developmental courses.
But we don't know if those eighty students stuck around or walked away.
No. I mean, we can dig in to find out what exactly happened to all of them. We don't know if all of them left. And I think like Linda said, a lot of them may have taken the reading class, taken the math class, and some other courses, you know, and ultimately at some point fell into one of those gaps.
Or they went over to welding, and the welding said, it's okay, we understand, come on.
That, that could have.
That's right, that could have happened.
We hope so, that, that could have happened too.
Or they took the dance and the music, where they didn't have to be at college level to take those, to take the no basic skills classes.
Gotcha.
Okay, next one.
Okay, and then the next is reading. And, and again, it's, you know, what, what happens between the gaps. But this, we have twenty percent of that three thousand-some students placed into developmental reading. So about six hundred students. And most of them attempted, eighty-nine percent again. And of the eighty-nine percent that attempted, forty-nine percent, about half of those became college level. So those ACS courses that we talked about, they, they made it through to college level. Were able to continue. And finally, math. And you see a really large number here of, you know, placing into developmental math, which is, I would be among them, probably. So over two thousand, two thousand one hundred and eight, sixty-nine percent placing into developmental math out of that group. And forty-three percent of those attempted. So you see a lot fewer attempting. There's a gap there, nine hundred and six, forty-three percent of those placing attempted. Of that forty-three percent, thirty-seven percent, or three hundred and thirty-five, became college level. So quite a few, you know, quite a few not make it to college level. And then of that thirty-seven percent who became college level, thirty percent managed to make it.
Question?
Well, I just, it's, it's huge.
Yeah.
I mean, oh, thirty-three thousand students. Two thousand of them weren't ready. How are we going to have advanced manufacturing? They gotta do algebra or whatever. I don't know what they have to do, but I'm sure it's more than something else. How do we have those classes, those tech classes, when only one thousand of our entering students are even minimally qualified? And how many of them want to do, you know, advanced tech? I mean, we, how can we support a program and everything? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, I think you're going to get some more information as the report goes. Math has expanded what they're doing in the last two years. So I think as we continue to look at this one, it's going to get better. We already have some.
I saw the math for engineering and stuff like that on the, on the.
Math's made a lot of progress. You may, as you recall, you mentioned, actually, Trystee DeVarty about the Alex. You recall, you recall that presentation. Chris will bring us up to date.
Now, if somebody isn't college-level in math, they could, for example, still take David Fitzpatrick's history class?
Correct.
Or many other humanities classes.
There's not a whole lot of classes that have a math level on it.
For his class, you probably should. For his class, you probably should have one for computing to grade, but never mind.
DJX?
So, Trustee Hatcher, you, you mentioned it a little earlier, that there's a lot of money being spent on developmental education. In your packets behind tab two, Department of Education did a summary of how colleges are using developmental ed. And with that, you'll see here some data around what's happening at the college level. So when we think about access, community colleges are the place where any student can come and learn, right? That's our basis of what we do, access. But when we look at how many of our students, this is national data, how many students actually end up getting to the front door, but then there's the other barrier of are they being placed into college-level courses? We can see that fifty-eight percent of Hispanic students, fifty-seven percent of African-American students, nineteen percent of Pell students, and forty percent of first-generation college students are placed in developmental ed. We mentioned, mentioned earlier that some of the testing that is being used may be placing students, overly placing students in developmental ed. And when we think about equity, it's this intersection, again, of between race, between socioeconomic status, and also looking at, again, the first-generation college students. So those, when combined, all those things, you, you do have more of those students ending up in developmental ed. Now, the, the question becomes, should they be there at all? And as we look at what happens here at Washington, we'll see a great disparity among our, our students. The voluntary framework of accountability really looks deep into disaggregating the data. Julie was showing the data of all students and how all of our students are not doing well. But when we look at the data based on race and ethnicity, you can clearly see, the first graph that we're looking at is a developmental math. Eighty-one percent of, and again, the top right corner is our, the numbers of students that we're talking about. So when we look at the African-American students, there were six hundred and seventeen in this cohort. Eighty-one percent of those students were placed into a developmental course, a developmental math course. And over the progression of students who actually attempted, students who actually became college level, met the college level in, in math. When we get to the students who actually passed a college-level math course, you'll see that only ten, this is ten, ten African-American students who were actually placed in developmental made it through at least passing one college-level math course. And when we look at our Caucasian students as well, again, there were hundreds of Caucasian students that were placed in developmental ed, but only eighty of those students actually made it to completing one, at least one, college-level math course. So when we look at the next slide, it's our developmental English course. And again, disproportionately numbers of African-American students are being placed into developmental English. The good thing about developmental English is that it's a requirement to take, being college-level is a requirement for most of our courses. So you'll see a very high percentage of students taking developmental English. But the, the large numbers of students taking it does not lead to large numbers of success. So when you look at the students who actually passed college-level English, only thirty-seven students, African-American students who were in this initial cohort, actually passed the college-level English course. So when you're looking at numbers of students, hundreds of students not making it to at least a college-level English. And finally, when we look at the writing, again, a disproportionate number of African-American students are being placed in developmental ed. And because, well, we, we don't have a, you know, our reading is, college-level reading is where you get to, so one oh seven, one oh eight. Eighty-four students out of the, it was about two hundred and thirty or so African-American students who were placed in the, to the developmental reading, actually made it to college-level reading. So when we think about this graph, just keep in mind that it's, it's not because they're African-American students. The intersection between race, poverty, and circumstances, certain school districts, all of that has a part to play. But we're also saying that a single placement tool, which right now is our AccuPlacer, may not be the best tool to accurately place students of color into, whether it's a developmental or a college-level course. And you'll see more, a little later on, hear more about why even here that data, it looks like we're underplacing students into college-level courses. Yes?
Yes, so, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, who's in charge? Well, I agree wholeheartedly that, I mean, I've never liked the reading and writing placement tools, ever, any of them, except the ones that the faculty developed. There has to be something. For instance, you're not going to get the nursing faculty to lower those standards.
Sure.
And I don't want...
And they shouldn't.
I want my nurse to know the difference between tens and hundreds.
Sure.
Yes, okay? So my question is, and it has to do with the, I understand why the nursing program keeps their math high.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't, there has to be some sort of assessment of what's required for each department. So it has to be a balance between an exam that's accurate and predictive, a placement tool, and one that also reflects the requirements of what we want them to do.
Sure.
We can't, we can't lower the standard so we have more completers. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Correct, correct. And I think that takes us right into Linda's part.
So this data has shown that, you know, placement tests lack validity. So there's growing research about the negative relationship between the test score and course outcomes. Placement tests nationally have shown that they generally underplace students. Underplace being, it could be ready for a college level, but it's under, it's placing them into developmental. ACT, which was the developer and owner of Compass, shocked the community college world in the beginning of 2016, when they said, we're not doing this anymore. Compass as of September is not going to be available for a placement tool. It's just done. So the schools were scrambling, and now that's why we moved to AccuPlacer. The reason they had to do that is because the data just kept showing, it's not a good tool. And so, we're not going to do it anymore. So again, we're just, other schools, it's just too many students. And so there's more and more pressure to say these, these tools are not working. Community College Research Center said a third, a third of the students who were placed in developmental by Compass could, could have passed the college-level class. So you think about the time, waste of money, waste of time, and they could have been going directly into a college-level class. So the next slide. So this shows some data from a large urban community college system that was looking at English and math. And students who were placed, you know, eighty-one percent of all the students were assigned into, eighty-one percent of the students that were assigned to remediation in English, twenty-nine percent of those students were underplaced. They could have gone into a college-level class. And nineteen percent of the students who were placed into a college-class, five percent were overplaced. So you see that the underplacement is much more prevalent than the overplacement. And then the same thing for math. Eighteen percent were underplaced. And again, as, as Chris will talk about later with Alex, of just sometimes doing a little bit of kind of remediation in terms of reminders of what they did in math and placed them into the college level. And again, five percent were overplaced. So you see that underplacing is much more of an issue than the overplacing. We look at the next slide. Here's a state system, and again, many, many states across the US have a state system where they've just had, set the score. And so this looks at the Compass versus AccuPlacer, and it gets worse. So you see on the left-hand side for English, you see the placement test where there was error in, it was twenty-seven percent error in the placement by using Compass. And there's only a twelve percent error rate when they use high school GPA. For math, there was a twenty-eight percent error rate versus, with the placement test, versus eleven percent. And again, this is looking at placement and then how they do in the course that they're placed into. If you move over to the right side, that's using AccuPlacer, which again, now is the only tool in the, in the, you know, once Compass went out of business, some schools before were using AccuPlacer, some using Compass. Now the Compass is out of business, everybody has had to switch to AccuPlacer. It's worse. So again, for this state system, AccuPlacer was actually, had more error rates than Compass did, and Compass was already bad. So you can see that this was a, high school transcript data is, you know, has, still has a little bit of error, but not near what the placement tests have.
So in 2016, when we got word that Compass was going out of business, the college rounded up a group of faculty, counselors, advisors, administrators to talk about what do we do next? So with no Compass, what are we going to use? So it was a really great opportunity for faculty to put their voice in in terms of what test they felt would be the best one to use. Because outside of having no high school transcripts or ACT or SAT scores, we have to have some way to take three thousand people and put them in classes. So the great thing was, with that flexibility, each area basically picked a different tool. ESL picked a tool that worked best for them. Reading and writing had probably the least option. AccuPlacer was one of the very few tests out there to use for placement. Math could have used AccuPlacer, but went with Alex, which, in your little glossary sheet, she is called Alex PPL. And the great thing about Alex was, or is, is it's not a one-shot deal. So students get five attempts at the placement. And in between each of those attempts, there are preparation modules that students can work on, both by themselves or with the support of a faculty, to move their placement score. So we made a pact with all of us that as we moved to these new tests, we would continue to monitor what was happening. So we worked very closely with our IR department, and nearly every semester since we made this switch, we've been asking for data, asking for data, asking for data. And every single time, we keep getting the same thing. And that's that the correlation between test scores and the developmental course grade was weak, null, or negative, meaning it wasn't good. Current cut scores, and when we talk about cut scores, we mean that break-off that puts you at this level or this level. Current cut scores predict generally low accuracy rates. So the graphs that Vivi Blakely just showed, we still are seeing a lot of error in terms of placement. A large number of these students we're finding are underplaced versus overplaced, and that the best predicted cut scores are actually much lower than what we're currently using. Now, if we go to the next slide, we're going to start talking a little bit about high school GPA. And we're talking a lot about math, mostly because math had kind of the most option in terms of having some opportunities to try different things based on the robustness of Alex and kind of the expense of Alex. Alex is, is not as inexpensive as AccuPlacer. So the math department, at the time that we switched, agreed to also consider GPAs because there was emerging data across the country that high school GPAs were also serving as valuable placement information for students in math. So starting in 2017, we started accepting high school GPAs and using that as a placement. So the campaign was three gets you three. If you had, if you came in with a high school GPA of three point oh or better, we would give you a college-level math placement of three. Now, if you wanted to go higher than that, then you could take Alex and show that you could demonstrate that, or we'd still use the ACT or the SAT to determine that. With a very small population that we've, we've had so far come through and we've used their high school GPA, we're getting really great results. So we had two hundred and fifty-nine students in the past year take advantage of the transcript. And our data is showing they're doing significantly better in terms of passing the courses, coming in and using the GPA as a placement tool. Only a handful of students, fifteen in this case, because there's so many students, decided to shoot for a lower-level class, which is reasonable. Some students who've been out for a while really don't feel confident to take that leap, so they underplace themselves. But it's definitely showing a promise. What we need to do on our end is encourage students to give us transcripts, because right now it's voluntary. They, they choose to give us that transcript or not, so it's not like we have something for everybody. But what we have found is since we've opened this door in fall of 2016, we had a statistic that seventy percent of new incoming students were at college level in reading, writing, and math. This fall, when we checked the same thing, we moved up to seventy-nine percent. So we have raised the needle, and there are a lot of reasons. We have the coaches in reading, we just added coaches in math, we're using multiple measures in math. We're doing all kinds of things all at once, but we're seeing really good results from what we've done.
So if we look at, you know, using a high school GPA versus a single-stakes, high-stakes placement test. So on the left, that high school GPA is actually a measurement of a better, you know, picture of multiple skills and measurements. So over a three- to four-year period of high school with multiple courses, multiple faculty evaluating the student attendance, it's not just one test coming in. Whereas your high-stakes test, it's an incomplete picture. How are you doing that day? It's going to be inconsistent. We just had the big presentation from Peter Barr from U of M, and he's been doing, studying community college testing kind of across the United States. It's a snapshot in time. And that snapshot, that day, maybe you were hungry, maybe you didn't get any sleep, maybe you had a fight with a family member that morning. There's all kinds of things that can impact that test. Even though it's an untimed test, you can have some timing on it. Just how you're doing that day can have a huge impact on the score on that particular day.
So, so one of the things that was also included in your binders that I think is an important kind of trend that we wanted to at least share in this presentation was that there has been a lot of policy action across the country. You know, one of the things we also, you've heard Chris mention, myself, Clarence, as well as Linda, is that we had a presentation last week from Peter Barr from U of M, and it was extremely interesting because he's one of the teen researchers in the work that's taking place in California. And so one of the things that's important to note is California as a state, they educate about twenty percent of the students who actually attend community colleges nationwide. And so, you know, there was a lot of weight on the research and how much data that he was able to present to us and what I think all of us learned from that information. So when you look at the policy action across the country, a lot of it does kind of coalesce around states that are state systems. So you see them doing a lot of different things with GPA, prerequisite models, you'll see that a lot, changing and doing things in math pathways, which our math department is actually looking at that as well. And then there actually has been some states that have implemented legislation, where that legislation, California is one of the ones that's most popular, where they've eliminated placement exams and require multiple measures for placing students into college-level or in the courses as they need them. Texas, Florida, and Missouri have also done some work in those areas. And so we're seeing a growing kind of change across the country in how we view placement at a community college level. And I think that when you look at the research that are also included, it, it mentions Michigan, because Michigan is not a state system, but through MCCA, most of the community colleges have been doing some work, be it in guided pathways, accelerated strategies in reading, in English. So there's been a lot of work and piloting of different projects. But I think that what's most important is what we do here at Washington College Community College. When we look at the data that was presented to us today, that was nationwide, really zoning in on that information that relates to Washington Community College, the work that we have done so far, and kind of what we think we should be doing and continuing to do going forward to make more students be successful.
When I was looking at, reading those papers about North Carolina, Georgia, they described the sort of experiment, and it's interesting, the motivations of it, but there are no results. There's no assessment of the plan in the paper. Do you see what I mean?
You know what, actually, they're, actually, California is the one that actually has more results. And I think all but one of their community colleges are showing really positive results in those student success. That's the one that has been experimenting most, a longer amount of time, and looking at that GPA. But you're right, a lot of those schools are still experimenting what they're going to be doing, and we've not seen a ton of results in those areas. But again, that, the California study, because it was such a diverse group of community colleges and the population is so diverse there, the results there specifically on high school GPA have been extremely positive. And so we're going to talk now about what actions that we're going to take here at Washington Community College. Because this is a... Because this is a lot of information, and it's not, you know, the happiest information, but of course, because we're always looking at improving and looking at what we're doing, we don't want to leave on the note, here's a bunch of information. So we'll close on those two items. We're going to close on two items.
I have, it may be self-serving, but I read a lot of the placement exams in the English department that students wrote an essay or a three paragraph. And it was often easy to see which ones really, they're not reading, they're really low. And there, but there were a lot that were, well, maybe, you know, maybe not. And the questions, I developed a set of questions for that student, like, and they were personal, and I asked permission to ask those questions. How much are you working? How many children do you have? How much time do you have? When was the last time you wrote a five-page paper? Those questions, the answer to those questions were a much better placement tool in many ways than even the essay. How much time you have for taking English 111 is crucial. And are you going to take Fives courses? Are you going to take math, history, geometry, and whatever else, and English 111? Or are you just going to take one or two classes? It makes a huge difference on whether they succeed or not. It has nothing to do with taking an ACT test or even writing an essay. So these are counseling questions, not essentially placement, but they're, they're crucial to placement. Because if you have a lot of time and no children and no job, you could take 111. Anybody could do that. But most of our students don't.
And I think it is important for us to always remember when we're looking at our students to not think of them in the lens of a traditional college student. I mean, our students have a lot of lives, and so there's a lot of stories inside those numbers that are very unique to our.
How's your car working?
Exactly.
That's a good question.
Exactly.
Thank you. That's okay, it's ready.
Okay, alright.
So the, the first big piece of this discussion is faculty conversation because it's really with the faculty, the courses they teach, the work that they do, that we need to think about. It really is a continuous improvement process, and our students keep coming with different challenges and different needs. But what we really want to do is make sure we're framing the question that we continue to ask ourselves in terms of what our strategic goals are of the college and what are the goals of the students. So we're not talking about, you know, which class should be better, or which placement test is better or worse, but what do we need to consider to decrease entrance barriers for students and increase the number of students who complete that college-level math and English course in their first year? We saw the statistics over six years, geez, if we could get it back to one year, could you imagine? And I think all the things you hear every single month with the Student Emergency Fund, the introduction of coaching, all the different work that faculty has done in looking at the placement tests and the multiple measures and putting in support courses with Alex and whatnot, all of that are what we're considering to decrease these entrance barriers. But we have to keep looking at it because as you can see, that ball keeps moving in our hands, and we have to keep addressing these issues.
One other thing I thought was useful for student success and placement was that students see math 097, they have no idea what that is. So they'd have no way of comparing it to their past experience. If they see English, what is that? What do I have to do to begin that class to succeed? There's no description or, that they can look at and say, oh, I can't do that, or I could do that. You see what I mean? They don't know the parameters of the class before they take it.
We used to have something on our placement page, what you need to know to get into 097, what you need to know. And I don't know if students ever went to it or used it or not, but we.
So the second area of action is updating college policy. So in your main folder, you have a pink sheet that shows policy, Board of Trustees Policy 4055, which is policy on new student assessment and individualized program funding. This policy was last updated in 2003, so it's been a long time. It needs to be updated to take into account the, you know, all the stuff that we've been talking about today. It needs to embrace a tone of success over remediation. It needs to include language about certificates and preparation alignment with exactly what, whatever the student's goal is and what the program that they're pursuing as opposed to having a one-size-fits-all process, which is what we have now. And looking at ways to do multiple measures of students to demonstrate what their, what their assessment, what their level is and what, and what do they need to have to access a program that they're interested in? If it's a certificate program, does that vary from an associate degree or transfer program? So we will be working with, you know, the faculty to update this policy and bring later this academic year, bring an updated proposal to the board for review as an updated policy.
And I think overall, you know, as far as the work that needs to be done continuously, we kind of call this our faculty call to action 2.0. A lot of work has been done so far. There's still work that needs to be done as it relates to, you know, what we're looking at and how we adjust advising and coaching and all those different things. And I think, you know, those conversations, you know, led us to dig into developmental education and, you know, kind of led us here to this, really this big placement issue and this board policy that we're going to work on with the faculty. So, you know, those are our big next steps, as well as some information about developmental education across the country and here at Washtenaw Community College.
Thank you.
Wow.
If they're, you want to take a deep breath because now we're going to go to part two. Thank you. Thank you. Linda is going to spend some time to explain the collegiate recovery program in our college. So Linda?
Thank you. So just to give you a sense of what is a collegiate recovery program, it is a support for students in recovery from addiction who are seeking a degree in higher education. So this is kind of a national movement. It consists of campus-based infrastructure to support recovering students by sharing the goals of providing support, preventing relapse, and promoting academic performance. So we are working on setting up a collegiate recovery program at WCC. So we want to call it CRP at WCC. The mission of our program at Washtenaw will be dedicated to providing recovery services for student success, persistence, and completion. We want to focus on assisting students with their academic success while maintaining sobriety. And we're committed to providing opportunities for fellowship, encouragement, support groups, and making sure that they have access to college and community resources. So Dean Liz Orbitz has conducted phone consultations. We've reached out to programs, to schools that already have CRP programs in place. We've reached out to the University of Michigan, Lorraine County Community College in Ohio, and the Community College of Philadelphia, our programs that we were able to identify initially. We're talking to them about the program framework that they have in place, what staffing, marketing, how do they get students involved, the budgets that they have. And we're continuing to do research with additional community college. When we look at the program at other, CRP programs on other campuses, the collegiate recovery program at University of Michigan, it's run through University Health Services. Matt Statman is the program manager. He actually started the program, he was, while he was a graduate student in the School of Social Work, he started the program. He's now a dedicated full-time staff person. They offer daily support groups. They also have set up a lounge, a dedicated lounge, which provides a safe, supportive space where students can relax and recharge. When we talked to Lorraine County Community College, they also have a dedicated space called Care Center. It started with one part-time staff. I got a note from Liz, and they go, oh, they have a part-time staff that works 60 hours a week on this project. I'm like, what? How's that work? They had a dedicated part-time staff who was in recovery themselves, and so they were making this program work. That now is that person transitioned to a full-time dedicated staff, with a licensed social worker that has certification in substance abuse. They also have two volunteers and four student workers. Lorraine is, has a little over 11,000 students, and they report that they see about 25 students a week at the care center. We've worked to, Liz and Carrie Mapes, a counselor on staff, have applied to and been accepted to Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration has set up a program. There was an application process, they applied and we were accepted. To a program that's called Building a Strong Collegiate Recovery Program: A Learning Community. The program is designed to assist colleges in starting, growing, and maintaining a successful collegiate recovery program. Liz and associate counselors, there's weekly sessions that are offered by this program, and they will be attending those sessions online. We also attended the Washtenaw County Opioid Summit, which was held on October 15. That summit was provided by the Washtenaw County Health Opioid Project. We will continue to attend those sessions to better understand the actual opioid crisis in Washtenaw County and our local community. We also have connected with Josh Meisler, who's a licensed social worker, and he's also a certified advanced alcohol and drug counselor. We currently do not have any of our counseling staff that are certified in substance abuse or the alcohol and drug area. He is the substance abuse treatment clinician at Growth Works. Growth Works is the leading longstanding social service agency specializing specializing in substance abuse. It's been in existence since 1971. We are, Liz and he are working on setting up a partnership where he could perhaps come in and help facilitate some of our support groups on campus because of his experience in the area. We have, Liz has been working with marketing to brand the program. So also in your, in your packet is kind of our first layout of branding the program, the collegiate recovery program at WCC. We will be rolling this program out in December and talking about, we'll be having our weekly sessions that will start in January for the winter semester. The winter semester starts January 14th, and so we will start having weekly support sessions around probably the second or third week of January after the start of the semester. And we will evolve the program to best meet the needs of the students who are participating in the program. So again, as we roll this out and invite students to come and participate in the program, depending on the needs of those students, we'll evolve to meet their needs. And our counseling staff is continuing to practice its ongoing professional development to expand in areas of substance abuse and mental health so that we can again, best meet the needs of our students. Are there any questions?
Yes, Bill.
I applaud you for this work. I think that this is a tremendous step forward for us at the college. I mean, community-wide, it's an issue. There is a resource, an exceptional resource here in the community that was missing up there, and that's Don Farm.
It's on our.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of resources here that we have currently on our, on our counseling website, but that we'll also focus on for the script as well.
Well, Jim Ballmer, the executive director of Don Farm, has worked with some of our students before. They are, for those of you that don't know, they're a drug and alcohol abuse center that is recovery community-oriented here, and they, they house about 80 or 90 people in a number of homes that they have around the community. They have a lot of experience in it. I didn't see their name on there, but I'm glad to know that you're apparently in contact with him.
Yes.
Good.
So you're in contact with these community resources. They would identify students for us, or identify students to come to this, or something?
Well, we would be reaching out to all of our, all of our students to say that we're starting this program.
Right.
These resources are on our website always.
For the students, yes.
For the students. But we would be reaching out to all of our, all of our current students?
Would they be advertising this to their students, to their clients?
You mean the agency?
The agencies.
Could they advertise it to their clients if they were, and if they happen to be students? Yes. If they happen to be students with us, yes. Yes.
So, so somebody who's at Don Farm, for example, might say, if they learn about this and that we have an ongoing counseling, and if we have an ongoing program here, somebody who's a Don Farm resident could say, oh, I'm going to take a class at Washtenaw Community College. And they've got this.
Correct.
Extra thing that I can participate.
Right, so that they, right, so they would be coming in more classes and participating in this program.
Okay, if there's no more.
Yes.
You mentioned that the weekly support sessions will be starting in mid to late January. Who is going to be conducting the support sessions?
So we'll either be working with Josh Meisler, who might be doing those initially, or it might be Carrie Mapes also. She's probably got the most experience with this population.
Right.
And again, just that, so that's what we're figuring out, kind of who's the best qualified to kind of facilitate these sessions.
Right.
And that's why we think Josh until we get more up to speed on, because he's the specializing in substance abuse and drug and alcohol.
I'm really glad to see us doing this because, I mean, it does, I mean, just impressionistically, it sounds like we don't have a lot of in-house expertise on addiction. And I think probably the more we can do to develop that expertise, the better because this is obviously a pretty serious problem. Full disclosure, my wife has been involved in this, and we've talked about it. And I'm glad to see that you guys are probably on this. The, the one other thing, and this sort of dovetails in with the developmental education discussion, my experience with folks with addiction is sometimes what you'll encounter is a lot of these folks have crashed and burned in academic programs in the past, and sometimes have pretty serious transcript issues that need to be addressed. And, you know, I'd be hopeful that as we go forward, that we give some thought to how we help folks. I know we are in the business of giving fresh starts to people. But my guess is we'll even see within our college itself, people who had to withdraw from courses because of substance abuse problems, who have ongoing transcript problems because of the problems that they've experienced in the past with substances. So I hope that we can be mindful of perhaps even creating a path for people to be able to reconstruct their college transcripts even though they may have relapsed and had a problem.
And we have an academic forgiveness process.
Great.
So for individuals who kind of had some rocky starts and then come back and then, you know, once they kind of demonstrate success for a certain number of credits, they can basically, we can, we'll go through and they can particular, have particular semesters that are no longer accumulated to their GPA. So we do have a process for that.
Yeah, and the one, the one thing that, just based on some of the stuff that Kristin and I sort of have looked at, you know, in these programs, it does seem like the ones that are successful have some, I mean, the U of M's program is largely coordinated by the individual who is some, you know, who is the full-time person over there. And, you know, I get the sense that if he drops dead, the program kind of would be a, would be a problem as well. And I think what you're describing at Lorraine sounds sort of similar as you've got people who are heavily committed to these programs. Because it takes a lot of work. I mean, we have a transient student population. You're not going to see the same kids in these groups every week. It's going to take to develop, you know, you know, anybody who's had any experience with AA or with 12 steps programs knows that, you know, groups are successful when you get a core of people who are motivated and committed to recovery and who are, who sort of carry the culture of the group forward from week to week to week. And that's super hard to do, especially in our environment. So I do hope that as we, you know, it sounds like a lot of these programs start out with a part-time person who's in recovery, or a part-time person with experience in addiction counseling. And then ultimately, you know, if the need arises, which I expect is out there, it's just a question of our finding them. You know, you get somebody who's motivated to actually, you know, beat the bushes, follow up with phone calls. follow up with phone calls, you know, chase people down and actually get them to participate. So, I hope that we do devote some resources to developing some in-house expertise so that there's somebody on staff, either part-time or on a full-time basis, who can, who can, you know, focus on this particular problem. Because I do think that, you know, it's a difficult population to work with. It's a transient population, and it's, you know, relapse is part of recovery, so you people go in and out. It's hard to develop that core. And especially in a collegiate environment, with the U of M, you got kids that are gonna be there for four years, so you've got cultural, cultural carriers who are gonna be there year in, year out. We don't have that luxury necessarily. We're gonna have folks for two years, or maybe three if we're lucky, and sometimes less. And, you know, so those, those folks will, you know, graduate from WCC and go to a, you know, possibly be leaders in a recovery program elsewhere. But, so I do think that having institutional expertise in-house is going to be key to making this successful.
Yeah, we're trying to get that.
I actually wanted to follow up on something that Trystee Landau said earlier and then ended up on in terms of developing in-house expertise. Do we currently, or are we thinking about some sort of tuition support or funding support for ours, for staff counselors that we have on staff now so that they can participate in programs to develop, further develop skills in this specific substance abuse areas? Is that something that we're doing now?
Well, it's, it's something we would never say no to. So, yes, I'm gonna say yes, I would encourage that.
So, we could, we could say we're gonna, we can devote some resources to building that capacity on our counseling staff.
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay, anything else? We are going to, I'm gonna say this, and then I'll say something else. We're going to go, we'll leave here when we return and go to room 120, Vanessa? To room 120. And then, I'm gonna let our president wrap this up.
Oh, I just, thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for being here tonight. I know you all have busy schedules, and I, we really value your input, and we wanted to bring you up to date where we were in this conversation. And so that when, you know, you hear a conversation, if you should worry on campus or whatever, you know what we're working toward. So, thank you so much. We did get your questions, so we'll make sure that we answer them. Just wanted to make sure that we got those scores out and explained all that, because they were great questions, and so, thank you so much. And I'd like to thank you for all the work that you did. This team put this together, and thank you so much.
I'd like to echo that. You guys did a wonderful job. You know, every board meeting you do, when you present all this materials to us, it's like, wow, what else do they do besides this, right? Anyways, do I hear a motion to adjourn the retreat meeting?
So, move?
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls? All right.